Councilman Sias.
Yeah.
Councilman Murdock.
Yes.
Councilman Kate.
Yes.
Councilman Dewitt.
Yes.
Councilman Sterling.
Yes.
Representative Montgomery.
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right, and now we will move on to invocation by Councilmember Kate, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
For our invocation tonight, I've dug way back into history. This was written in the 16th century by the reformer Martin Luther. I thought it was appropriate. Lord grant that anger or other bitterness does not reign over us, but it's your grace, genuine kindness, humility, every kind of friendliness, generosity, and gentleness reign in us. Amen.
What do you just do to apply in the United States of America, to the Republican Party, what is the answer? On my nation, on my God, in the resolve, the recruiting justice is all.
All right, this time on the agenda, uh, this time on the agenda is for any citizen to direct brief comments or questions to the city council. Time for public comments will be given when the agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please stand by the wall near the podium, uh, to ensure visibility and be, to be recognized. And after being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and your address of residency or the record and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi there. Thomas Cash seventeen eight thirty-eight, Short Street, Spring Lake, but it's in Ferrisburg. Uh, comment. Excellent job of refinishing one sixty-eighth street. Question, what are you gonna do with that pile of dirt?
Craig.
Um, that's, that's for that, uh, development, uh, going in there on one hundred and sixty-eight. What is it, uh?
It's in the front yard of a house.
I know.
That's the site of the development. That's the site of the development. The development will be in, in place of that house and the house next to it.
Okay, it'll be gone soon.
Yeah.
They're starting to tear down that house today, so I'm assuming that soon that the pile of dirt will be leaving. Gotta go. You gotta fill in.
My concern was if you were gonna move that pile of dirt, the heavy trucks to move that pile of dirt, we're gonna mess up that nice, brand-new road.
Uh, that's, it'd be all off-road, I believe.
Yep. All right.
Hi, Nicole Larabel, one six eight one four, Virginia Avenue, Ferrisburg. There's no audio on tonight's livestream, according to my husband that texted me. Uh, for my public comment tonight, I want...
Hang on a minute, it's a live stream.
Thanks, Craig. For my public comment tonight, I want to elaborate on a post that I made on Ferrisburg Informed. I was unable to make another post with more information. Mayor Carlson wants voters to restore a property tax millage voters approved in nineteen ninety-five. Eleven mils with a headly override, up from the current six point seven nine mils, a thirty-eight percent increase. When he says the voters approve this rate, he's just restoring it. He means voters in nineteen ninety-five approved it, when taxable values were a fraction of what they are today. According to the National Association of Realtors, the home prices averaged a hundred and fourteen thousand in nineteen ninety-five compared to three hundred and eighty-nine thousand in two thousand twenty-three. Taxable values have multiplied since nineteen ninety-five. Presently, of the eleven mil property tax allowed, the city only collects three point four, or seven point four three mils due to the headly amendment fraction reduction, Carlson said in the Grand Haven Tribune. This decrease in funding is only... Going out again a little bit.
Hold it, Nicole, hold it closer to you, mouse.
The, the actual city's rate of the millage is point seven nine. Carlson's quote of seven... Accurate. What does eleven mils mean for you? This will increase the total amount of property taxes due for the city of Ferrisburg operating millage portion of your tax bill by thirty-eight percent. It's important to know that it would take a vote of the citizens' override. The only candidate who is currently running for city council said it would be an unlikely and unpopular event that the headly amendment would be rolled back. Emily Sterling of the Rec Commission in Ferrisburg informed, laughed and said there, she doesn't think there is a chance of it passing in the city.
Thank you.
Any comments?
We're getting squeezed, we're getting squeezed, but, whoa, do you like a comment?
If you'd like.
Um, Mr. Carlson's right, our budget is getting shrunk and shrunk. Um, it, uh, headly limit, headly amendment rolls back property taxes, which means we are getting squeezed financially for the city. At this point in time, we're still a positive, uh, uh, budget, so, but, um, with several times, I, I recall, four or five times, we put the headly amendment on the ballot and it's been voted down overwhelmingly. Is that correct, Craig?
Three times, three times.
Yeah, so it went on the, the, the ballot in two thousand five, um, or two, yeah, two thousand five, and they, uh, the city council asked for... Then in two thousand seven, it went on the budget again, and they asked for, I think, what, half a mil increase?
Yeah, we're not, we're asking for it, roll it back up to eight point seven.
And then in two thousand eight, I think it was about a quarter of a mil that they required. So, when, when people talk about a headly override, it doesn't mean that anyone is asking it jump, to jump directly to eleven percent. The city council can work with citizens to request whatever increase it is closer, uh, to, to draw back the headly amendment that, that we want. However, it then goes to the people, and to Mike's point, it has so far never passed in the city. Um, with that, we have not had a lot of conversation about that, other than, uh, Councilman Sias and, and Mayor Carlson both mentioning it as, um, opportunities, uh, in the future in their, in their political campaigns, which I think has, has stirred up, uh, a little bit of, uh, confusion and concerns, rightfully so, with our citizens. Um, with that, any other comments?
Your honor, I'd just like to clarify that my statement was if we don't stop the spending in the future, we are gonna have to ask the citizens and ourselves some hard questions, like a headly override. I would first cut spending before I ever endorse any kind of tax increase on the citizens. Or I would look into alternative ways to bring in outside revenue before I ever increase taxes. We will work hard in coming up with innovative ways to decrease spending and incre- increase our revenue before any of this will be rolled out to the citizens if I have a say.
Yeah, and I, I think that all of council, including Mayor Carlson, would agree with that statement.
Well, Mayor Carlson's comment, I believe, was spending has increased, so we need to look at asking the headly roll back.
Yeah, I get it.
Different, different statements, apples and oranges.
With that.
I'm David Brockmire. I used to live at one seven seven five three hundred and sixty-eighth avenue. That house is in the middle of demo. But I do live over on, uh, still in Ferrisburg, over on West Spring Lake Road. I can't remember the address, off the top of my head. Um, but I'm here as a homeowner on one hundred and sixty-eighth. I too echo that the new road is amazing. Y'all knew that that was gonna come with a downside, which is speeding. Um, I think Nicole and myself and anybody else who lives on one hundred and sixty-eighth have already seen the downside of this brand-new, beautiful road. Um, and I just want to, along with Skip Larabel, who I think has submitted a, a comment to you, Craig, uh, via email, but just to echo that, we, I think we would love to look at some alternatives. I know, I've been in here at meetings when you guys were talking about North Shore and some of the solutions, rolling back, putting in, moving, uh, speed bumps and that sort of thing. I don't think those are effective at all. Um, but there are some other visual things. I really like the idea that has happened with the street where the, the, uh, it's a little bit narrower and a, a little bit more space outside the white lines. I think that naturally will slow people down a little bit. But I just would like to suggest, um, Skip had said something about a crosswalk going in at Cottage Shores, which is true. We're gonna have a painted crosswalk going across from that project to the bike path, and that also is another visual cue for people to slow down, uh, that there are pedestrians in the area. And, um, you know, I think we also would look at, uh, would like to look at lowering the speed limit on that street down to thirty miles an hour. Um, I put that out on Facebook just as something to think about, uh, with Ferrisburg Informed, and, uh, I'd like us to, you know, I don't know if you have a, um, formal way of considering this, but I think it's important for us to look at that corridor as less of an outlet, uh, to Van Wagner and out of the city, as it is a part of the city that is a residential area and is gonna continue to grow, uh, with new homes in, around the area and out in Spring Lake Township. And with Cottage Shores coming in, we're gonna have more traffic there, too, so, but I think, uh, overall, we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to keep traffic low, aside from just driving slow and keeping people going slow. Um, so, open to all kinds of solutions there. I think there's some good ones that we can have that don't cost a lot of money, um, including just using paint. I think I've sent a, a couple of suggestions to the city in the past about, um, painting in a certain way that I've seen in other countries where it looks really effective, um, to slow traffic down. So that's, that's all my comment.
Your honor, um, I had a conversation with, uh, I can't remember his name, the command sergeant, and, uh, they've written a couple of tickets on our sixty-five and thirty-five. So they are patrolling it more heavily than they have in the past, because obviously with the old road, you couldn't go sixty-five. But he's written a couple of tickets personally, and these couple of sheriffs have, so, uh, um, they are kinda on top of it and keeping an eye on it. Okay? Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, yeah. And they're not writing any written warnings. They're actually writing tickets now.
They're not working?
Yeah.
We've, we've talked briefly about some things that you said with paint colors and, and narrowing roads in certain, in certain courses, so that it indirectly slows. We'll continue to talk about it, but...
Craig?
I talked to the sheriff's department about that, or...
All right, uh, with that, we'll move on into six, consideration for approval of consent agenda. A, approval of July twenty-one, twenty twenty-five city council meeting minutes as printed. B, approve the bill memo in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents. And C, approve asset level guideline for twenty twenty-five assessments.
Your honor, I move for approval of the consent agenda. Support?
Motion support. Any, uh, discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
If I may, uh, for Craig. Uh, Craig, um, on the sewer repairs on Van Wagner for fourteen thousand one hundred, what, what, what did that entail?
That was a project that, uh, city council approved earlier this year to do some repair work on that sewer.
Yeah, what, what was it? What was it specifically? What repairs needed to be done?
There were some structures that needed to be repaired.
Okay. And, uh, one other question, um, I believe it was on this, the, the, uh, community garden fence for nine thousand three hundred and five dollars. Um, isn't that an expense that should've went through council?
That was something we talked about at city council, and we got a partial grant to, to purchase that fence through the North Main Community Foundation.
Okay, and, but our portion of it was nine thousand on top of the grant?
That was, that was, uh, half down on, on that payment there, so the total fence was around eighteen thousand.
The total fence is eighteen thousand?
Yes.
Um, did we discuss that at council?
I'm not sure. It was never just, it was mentioned at the council meeting that, that we were gonna put that fence up, eight foot fence, because the deer were coming in or destroying all the crops that the gardeners were putting in.
Yeah, I understand that. Was, was there any alternative ways of looking to keep the deer out, other than fences? I'm sure you did, uh, yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
The gardeners are trying to get creative and keeping the, the deer out, but, uh, it's just not working.
Okay, all right, just in, yeah, yeah, in the future, it'd be good to run this through council. That, that's a significant cost.
Okay, can do.
Your honor, um, we did discuss it at council, Jerry.
Yeah, we did discuss this.
Yeah, I know we discussed it, but did we make a mo- did we make a motion?
We made, we made motion to go ahead, yes, sir.
Oh, we did?
Yes, we did.
Well, I'm, I'm mistaken. I'm sorry. Thank you, Craig. I, I didn't... That's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Uh, give me a quick, uh, update on this asset level guideline. Run that by me, Craig.
So, every year, city council approves, uh, poverty asset level test, and typically, we put in there that, uh, they have, if there's fifteen thousand dollars or less in liquid assets, they're eligible to get a poverty exemption. Uh, the state wants the language to say that if you have fifteen thousand dollars or more in liquid accurate assets, you're not entitled, you're not eligible to get that poverty exemption.
Well, this is basically what we passed in, we passed in the past.
Right, basically, it's the same thing. Fifteen thousand dollars was the dollar limit.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please, Craig.
Councilman Murdock?
Yes.
Councilman Kate?
Yes.
Councilman Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilman Sterling?
Yes.
Councilman Sterling? Or Sias, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Representative Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right, uh, agenda item seven, new business. A, discussion and to take action if appropriate to approve a proposal from Preen and Newhoff for ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for design and construction engineering for Pine Street from Ridge Avenue to Third Street.
Question?
No, you have motion.
So moved. We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
All right, motion and support. Now we can have discussion.
I don't see any reason to do anything with Pine Street. I'm totally against spending a hundred thousand dollars. I don't, we don't have that kind of a business. We don't need that extra parking. What are you thinking? Where are you gonna, who are gonna come and park there?
So, so Craig, is, was this already on our, our sort of risk grant schedule for replacing that system, part of the road?
Yes, the cities for the last five or six, seven years have submitted a grant application for repairs at, on Pine Street. Each time that grant's application has not been successful, one is due to the amount of traffic, uh, especially, uh, commercial traffic in that section of the street. So it's been on our radar for a number of years to get this fixed. On the, uh, west side between probably Fourth Street and Third Street, Fifth Street, it is really deteriorating pretty bad and needs to be repaired. So we, we got a proposal from the city engineer to do design and construction engineer for this project. This is all the, uh, city costs. There's no grant money involved. So before we start design, engineering on this project, we wanna talk to city council and find out, in the master plan that was just recently adopted, there's some discussion about change, putting parking on Pine Street, on street parking. And so, planning commission talked about it and kind of had some comments that were included in, in your packet. Now, city council needs to provide direction to staff. Do we wanna design it with on-street parking or just have it repaired what, as is? If we repair it as is, it would be minimal work to get it, to go to have parking on the street. If we design it with on-parking, on-street parking, it would be more of a challenge to get it back to four lane traffic.
Your honor, I got one question. What's the point? Pine Street's got plenty of parking. Bank has parking. Keene Marine has off-street parking. We're gonna gain, how many par- parking places we gonna gain? Twelve, fourteen, maybe?
Uh, probably the design shows about twenty-five spaces could be put onto Pine Street.
For what reason? That's, that's my question. We don't have a business district down there. You know, somebody's gonna buy five houses and tear them down and build a, put a, a commercial project in there. We can always stripe it later if we had to, you know, if we wanted to. I just don't see any need for on-street parking down there at all. Um, the other question I got is, uh, the repair, we're gonna grind it down and repave it?
Yeah, it'd be reconstruction. There'd be some storm sewer work, uh, done in this project as well.
But sewer work involved besides just the street?
Uh, not sanitary sewer, I don't think, just storm sewer.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I question whether, you know, if we're gonna grind a street down and repave it, I don't see why we have to pay these engineers this kind of money. Um, if there's storm sewers involved, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that, that takes an engineer to involve, involvement. Uh, my thought is, uh, leave it as it is, grind it down, fix it, and go from there.
Your honor, I, I read this carefully, and I understand the reasoning behind it, uh, the whole idea of, uh, developing an attractive central business area, downtown area, if you will. Um, the only, and, and it, the more I read it, the more it made sense. The only thing that I can't get my head around is we've already got a huge bottleneck at the intersection of Third and Pine, uh, especially during, uh, rush hours when people are leaving and coming into the Spring Lake area, uh, to get on and off of one oh four. Um, I, I just can't see adding to the bottleneck problem by eliminating a traffic lane for going north of that intersection. It's already a big problem.
Jerry, Jake, anything?
Yeah, um, your honor, I, I agree with Mike and Debbie, um, and Bill. Um, I think, um, we're, we're approaching this a little prematurely. I know that there's some discussion of creating a downtown central district down there, and I believe if we are going to proceed with parking on Pine Street, we should at least wait until the zoning is, is, uh, changed in that area to provide commercial and residential use, so that parking would be needed. I, I, I just feel right now it's premature.
I had a question for Craig. Um, the design and construction for this, is, that's, is that necessary regardless if we add parking to Pine Street?
Yeah, 'cause we wanna get involved with the storm sewer, making sure we have the right grids and everything else like that, uh, on, on the pipes. We talked about having, you know, just a repave, uh, take off the top coat and having the contractor come in without the engineer, but the public works department believes that there is more intel than just that with the storm sewer work, underground work.
So we're, when we vote on this, we're not necessar- we're not necessarily voting on parking on Pine Street here, right?
So the consensus, it seems like the feedback I'm getting from city council is just to design it as is with the repairs.
And what would be the cost associated with that? Still, what's listed here in, in A?
Which is in, in your packet.
Thank you.
All right.
So, but, um, Craig, with, with the, if in the future we want on-street parking, you know, we gotta do a strip, correct?
It'd be minimal change. Yeah, I'm striping, and if you wanna do bump outs for pedestrian crossings and stuff like that.
That's what I'm saying, is it's easy for us to add parking later. It's not easy for us to add parking now and take it away later.
Right, exactly.
So, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I guess Mike, Mike was, what's the point?
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense to keep the way it is. Now, uh, Craig, that's ninety-nine thousand is just for the, um, design and construction engineering. Do we know how much the project is?
The estimate right now is about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Have that in our budget?
Yes.
Um, did, did everybody hear that, by the way? We have that in our budget. For all the budget hawks out there, Craig always operates within budget. That's been my experience for two years on the city council. So, we have a lot of talk up here about money problems within the city. We are, we have a balanced budget. Craig also plans for future budgets, so I just wanted to clarify that while we're talking dollars and cents here. We, we are within budget. We've always been within budget, and we plan on and intend on being within budget moving forward.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a, a, a good point to make for everybody, and, and I, I think it's important also note that, um, you know, people have commented on seeing our budgets increasing over the last several years. A major part of that is us, right? Support of Craig, he's factoring in, uh, padding our budget for future years to account for some of these larger projects, correct, Craig?
That's correct. So we've been collecting street millage, and with that street millage, we just been putting it in reserve and to pay for the one sixty-eighth avenue project, which was a million-dollar project. And we've got some money in the budget for the Pine Street repair.
Craig, this is coming out of the street millage?
Correct.
So it's not coming out of the general budget, which is what the headly amendment would, um, address, correct?
Well, the headly amendment does affect the street millage. It does reduce it, but the street millage, that money goes right into the major and local street fund. And so the s- major street fund would pay for this project.
Right, right. It's not coming out of the general budget.
It's not coming out of the general fund.
This is something that the taxpayers have passed in the, by voting.
That's correct.
They, yes.
That, that is also affected by the headly amendment.
Now, I thought the headly amendment only affects the general budget and spending in the general budget. Millages are separate from the headly amendment. I thought millages, I thought the millages was a result of the headly amendment to make up differences in funding.
Any millage that is leveraged against the taxpayers is subject to the headly amendment. So the street millages, the villi- villico motorized millages, subject to that. Museum is leveraged a, a millage that gets reduced every year by the headly amendment. Uh, Four Points, Council on Aging, that gets reduced every year.
Right, right, but the problem that we're running to in, in, is not millages, it's the general fund. And that's what we're talking about, the cost, and we're gonna need more in the future.
What problem do we have? What problem do we have?
Well, let's just say, uh, the state didn't bail us out on Smith's Bridge.
Well, they did, so we can, we can do hypotheticals back all, all day.
But why don't we put money away for those rainy days when they don't? And what about in twenty years from now, when Smith's Bridge starts to, uh?
We can talk hypotheticals all day about trying to be ready for emergencies.
Well, you just asked me what problems we have, and I'm...
Yeah, so, so, just to cut you off second, um, I, I'd like to move on, but let's just point out, our, our general fund operates several years. Um, and with that, you're, you're correct, we do need to start setting aside money. We have been setting aside past several years to account for the major projects. We probably should have a standing line item in our budget to set more aside for Smith's Bridge, because you're right, in twenty or thirty years, we probably will be in this situation again. And if we do our jobs correctly, we won't be leaving the council in twenty or thirty years high or dri- high and dry. So you're correct, we need to plan for the, the future, but the headly amendment affects all millages, and, and that affects our overall.
Millages are renewed every time that the account grows, uh, down. Every time the account goes down, we ask for another millage. So it, it, the headly amendment does not really...
We vote on a millage just like we vote on a headly override, still asking our taxpayers for more money.
Right, on, on top of the general fund, because of the...
What oftentimes is millages are passed to compensate for the lack of funds in the general fund.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we're gonna move on, so we, we...
Why do we have gen- deficits in the general fund?
We don't.
Then why do we need millages?
We're, we're gonna move forward.
Your Honor, um, quick question for Craig. Uh, are we gonna attempt to get a, uh, grant for, uh, the repave on that street?
The city has tried since two thousand and sixteen to get a grant for that project, and we have never been able to.
Can we try again?
The feedback we get is just, there's not enough commercial traffic on that street.
But with the storm sewer improvements, would that fall under a DEQ grant possibly?
I can look into it.
Would you please?
Yep, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and support on the table for approving the ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for design and construction and engineering. Craig, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kate?
No.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Sterling?
Yes.
Councilmember Sias?
No.
Councilmember Murdoch?
No.
Mayor Phil Tim Montgomery? Motion did not pass.
All right, uh, seven B, discussion.
Your Honor, do we, you want us to take another motion on that?
We'll go, we'll review this with the engineers, see if we can make any adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, seven B, discussion, and to take action if appropriate to approve an agreement between the City of Fairiesburg and the Spring Lake Township for improvements to pump station number one.
Your Honor, so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
Craig, could you elaborate, please?
Yes. Pump station number one, which is at William Ferry Park, is, needs some repairs. Uh, some repairs were made back in two thousand and ten, and it was a joint project. Uh, half the flow for, that goes through that station is from Spring Lake Township. Half of it is from Fairiesburg. So back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we entered, entered an agreement with Spring Lake Township that they would oversee the project, and the city would pay half of it. This project, the city's gonna oversee it, and Township has agreed to pay one-half of it. That's what the agreement says, that the Township is responsible for one-half of the payment.
Now, this, uh, uh, money's coming out of the sewer fund?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Craig, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Sterling?
Yes.
Councilmember Sias?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, new business, I am seven C, discussion, and to take action if appropriate to approve a proposal from Preina Newhoff for sixty-four thousand dollars for design and construction and engineering for pump station number one.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion.
A quick question. Uh, Craig, Preina Newhoff has done our sewer work for multiple years.
Yes, they have.
And we've been satisfied?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, just, uh, um, ha- have you, um, explored, uh, other engineering firms?
Not for this project, no.
When, when is the last time we explored an engineering firm for one of our pump station or, uh, street engineering designs?
Uh, street engineering was about the, was for the one-sixty-eighth Avenue project. We went out for bid.
Okay, and, and they were all relatively close?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I just wanna make sure they're, you know, not growing if we're using them as, and not bidding.
Yeah, Preina Newhoff has done a lot of our, our sanitary sewer work. Uh, they work with, closer to Spring Lake Township, so the Township's comfortable with them too.
Okay, good. Any, uh, further discussion? All right, Craig, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sterling?
Yes.
Councilmember Sias?
Yes.
Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, uh, seven D, discussion, and to take action if appropriate to approve a recommendation from the Recreation Commission to approve a proposal for painting services of West Michigan for fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents to paint two metal roofs at William Ferry Park. So moved. Motion and floor?
All support.
Motion and support, discussion?
Craig, are we painting these roofs just to change the color, or is there a legitimate reason to paint them? Are they getting rusty, and what?
They're rusty, the, the spots on them that, and needs, they need some work.
Okay.
We looked at this doing it last year, uh, there was, it wasn't a budgeted item in the twenty-five, twenty-six bu- budget. City Council approved funds to have this work done.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, you can see the roof of the restroom building from, uh, coming off the bridge, and it's a, it's a mess.
And the Rec Commission's been talking to us for several years now. We've just been spacing it out as we have.
Um, Craig, do you know what the, what they're made of? What kind of metal are they? Are they steel, or?
I don't know what kind of metal it is.
Probably aluminum. I, I do have one question. Uh, why did we decide to go with green? Um, is teal not our city color?
So we, we, we looked at different colors. The teal is pretty outdated, and the green matches everything else we've been doing in the city, so most like all the benches, all the trash cans, all that matching color.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious where, where the green came from. Yeah, so, all right.
Is that Craig?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion?
This is all out of the rec.
Is it, Craig?
Out of the rec- Recreation Com- Recreation Department, out of the general fund. So we budgeted three thousand dollars for this project, and it came in under fourteen, a little over fourteen thousand.
How many, how many estimates do we use, Craig?
Two. I think that's for two.
We budgeted three thousand and?
Thirty thousand.
Oh, thirty thou- okay, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, I heard three thousand too.
Sorry.
Almost sixteen thousand under budget.
Okay, all right.
Any, uh, any further discussion? All right, with that, Craig, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sias? Councilmember Murdoch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Dewitt? Councilmember Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tim Montgomery?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, moving along, seven E, introduction of ordinance number three-three-eight, a cost reco- excuse me, cost recovery ordinance. Craig, any, uh, um, concerns from, uh, Chief Althoff?
No, Chief Althoff has looked at this, the attorney has looked at it, and both have signed off on it. This, uh, something that City Council looked at earlier this year, uh, and when that discussion happened, they wanted, you wanted to include some, uh, language about hazardous materials through the city, so then language has been added.
And the chief wasn't concerned about that?
No.
And no concerns about the drunk driving? Or intoxication, right?
So, he didn't have any concerns, his comment was, he'd rather not do it.
Oh, if, if, yeah. I think it's, it's reasonable to say if you're drinking under the influence and driving and causing accident in Fairiesburg, we shouldn't pass that burden on to the taxpayer. All right, uh, any other discussion on this?
No, may, may, um, yeah, I, I really like this. Um, this is a great example of us saving money for the taxpayers and, um, uh, bringing in outside revenues in order to do that. This is a good idea, and I applaud it.
Yes, I, I agree. Any, uh, any, uh, additional comments? I think it's a good one. All right, uh, with that, uh, new business, seven F, discussion, take action if appropriate to schedule a work session as a regular agenda item on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think we need a work session on one hundred and sixty-eighth.
Traffic?
Correct.
Sure. Can you dig out some of those old articles we got, Craig, about, uh, the, the different paint schemes, and some of them talk about narrowing roads strategically and, and different options for us to talk about?
Yes.
Maybe get the engineer's perspective too?
When we designed that, when that pro- pro- street was, uh, being designed, we talked to the city engineer and told me this was gonna be an issue. So, what we came up with was one of the issues was their eleven-foot lanes, and to try to reduce the sprees down, we, we squeezed it and striped it with a one-foot lane on the, so it was actually a ten-foot driving lane. And the hope of that was gonna help with the speed.
That was one of those painting ideas we talked about.
Yeah, that's good. Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to put on there a discussion on the playstation at Ferry Park. Perhaps, uh, I don't know if you have a Rec Commission meeting prior to the next, uh, City Council?
I think it's after our next meeting.
Perhaps they could discuss it, may set up a real fund me thing, or, uh, fund something. I've had several people complaining that their children can't slide on the little kids' foot.
Yeah, I, I've heard that as well.
I have too.
Yeah, this will be on the Recreation Commission agenda for their discussion.
Yeah, can you get a couple, uh, at least ballpark ideas of what's the cost for us, right?
Is there, uh, any insurance, uh, involved in that?
That playground has been depreciated so much, there wouldn't have been anything to give back.
Point in.
Correct.
Insurance claim, okay, thank you.
All right, any other, uh, ideas for a work session?
So, going back to Mike's, Councilmember Dewitt's comment, do we want the playground structure on work session, or wait till after the Recreation Commission?
Let's wait until the Rec Commission can look at it.
Yeah, I, I think we should discuss it. We, we can discuss it. There's a Rec Commission meeting prior to, correct?
No, three days after.
Three days after?
Summer's gonna be over.
Oh.
If we discuss it, maybe, uh, the Rec Commission will get the idea that we're seriously considering doing something with it.
Well, we can pass that sometime.
Yeah. Uh, we, we can discuss it and then pass it on to the Rec Commission for the next meeting. That's agreeable.
To the Council, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine. All right, any other, uh, ideas for?
And the two ideas that were in your packet, we'll clue those as well.
Uh, yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and seven G, work session, twenty twenty-five, City Council goals. Craig, you wanna give us an update on this?
Yes, earlier this year, uh, City Council approved some goals for, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six year. In your packet, it is kind of an update on some of the results we're working on. Uh, on the first page, we're talking about physical responsibility. Uh, City Council has approved, uh, the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, when the budget process was, there was some discussion on, on the Headley rollback, and there was some discussion on the motorized equipment millage, and also the street millage expiring next year. So we're continuing to keep that topic on the forefront, uh, to, for City Council to consider. Economic, uh, infrastructure development. Uh, we got a grant to do the one-sixty-eighth Avenue, and, uh, improvements at Fire Barn Park are wrapping up, and that was a, a budgeted item in the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It didn't not get completed in there, and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget was supposed to be done by June thirtieth, so we did not include any monies in the twenty-five, twenty-six. We were just rolled over, so we need a budget amendment to make it official as part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, parks and recreation, uh, we didn't include, include some improvements at, at Coast Guard Park uh, for some work out there to spruce it up a little bit, and we're getting close to getting the transfer on the one acre to the city uh, from the property to the east of the City Hall building. On community confidence and safety, uh, City Council reviewed placing charter amendments on the twenty-five, twenty ballot and review, uh, we're not able to go to put the ballot charter memo on the twenty-five ballot. There's a two-year waiting period before we can go back to the voters, so we'll discuss that, put it in there sometime in twenty twenty-six ballot. And we're working on updating the city logo. Uh, digital signs are, have been restarted. Open for any comments or questions.
Craig? Your Honor, oh, go ahead, Jay.
I know I sent out an email about the signs.
Yes.
Did they ever get back to you as far as, can we move forward with that without, easily to, to slot that in?
Right.
So what kind of timeline are, are we on as far as getting those new signs installed then?
Uh, he didn't give me a timeline. I'll check with that though, but they did start the project back up.
Okay, thank you.
So, so we're gonna start the project back up with, uh, current so- current city logo?
Correct.
I'm assuming it, it's like a panel or something they can change in the future if we need to?
Craig, just a round hole in there, they'll fill it with the city logo. As long as the new logo is brown or similar, they'll be able to do that. They have a little slice in the metal for the sale. They'll be able to patch that up if it's changed.
So that's, you directed them to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a, as a side comment on that, uh, the property owner of, uh, two oh one Pine Street, uh, we've talked to her, uh, three times at least, uh, we still have not got the easement from her to put the new digital sign out there, so we might have to look at alternate location for that sign.
Could we put it across the street in Ferry Park?
We'll have to look at a different location, yes.
Do we not have a sign there already, Craig?
A, a marquee sign, yes, a monument sign.
We can't just replace that sign?
We could probably keep that sign and put the digital sign someplace else closer to the property line.
Okay.
We can keep.
Yeah.
Could, could we put our sign in that, um, Gressi Knoll area there, where one oh four and?
Triangle?
Yeah, the triangle right there. Is that city property?
No, that's M dot property.
That's M dot?
We get a permit every year to put, plant the flowers there.
Yeah, I know, they plant, yeah.
Craig, um, did we budget, uh, for, um, did we budget as a city to cover the entire cost of one hundred and sixty-eighth Avenue?
Yeah.
So, so this grant for half a million dollars that we got puts us ahead?
Right, so we're, the city's responsible for the other costs. We haven't seen the final cost coming up, but we're on hook for that. Probably another five hundred thousand dollars plus the engineering, which was one hundred and seventy-five thousand, somewhere in there.
So, so we're ahead financially on the project?
Well, we kind of knew the budget, the grant was gonna be there, so we kind of played, planned that budget, or the grant in the budget.
Okay. Any other discussion on, uh, City Council goals? All right, uh, if no further discussion, we will move on to item eight, public comments. Yes.
Dave Cook, one seven six zero five, one hundred and sixty-eighth Avenue. I was working out in the gym, and I could hear the public comment loud and clear. So, I ask, why the, uh, situation with the city, the financials, is a big deal right now, just before the primary election? Correct me if I'm wrong, but all of you voted for the current budget that we have in place. And if it's such a freaking disaster, why did you vote yes? The other thing I'll mention is my neighbor keeps posting the same thing over and over, and if you listen to her public comment tonight, the numbers are different than what she's written about five different times on all of the informed websites. The other thing that she said was that I'm the only person running for City Council, which is not true. There are two more people. They're here tonight. Debbie Murdoch and Bill Kay are also appearing on the ballot in November. So, you need to verify the information people are spewing online. It may not be accurate, it may not be the whole truth. And Jerry Sias, I have been waiting for you to. And Jerry Sias, I have been waiting for you to answer my questions about what your plans are to curb city spending and city budget. You have ghosted me online, you have had your followers attack me. You have called into question, I have... I have the floor, do not talk. You cannot answer the questions because you cannot campaign on city property. That is the end of my public comment, have a great night.
I believe you shut off comments on your post. I didn't refuse not to answer, you're the one that refused to let anybody comment, thank you.
Mr. Lyons? Thank you. Good evening, Joe Lyons, one-six-eight-five-seven, Virginia Avenue. Seems like Virginia Avenue is well represented this evening. And, uh, I hope it always stays that way. Uh, I did want to say one thing, uh, I... I'm really happy, uh, for what has happened on one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street. Uh, we've got a beautiful new road. Um, and I am concerned a little bit about the fact that it, uh, can turn into a raceway. And apparently it has to a certain degree. Um, unfortunate, I don't actually live on one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth, but... But, uh, uh, there is that opportunity and it looks like it's, uh, happening. Um, my other concern with regard to one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street, um, and I think, um, Mr. Brockmire may have, uh, addressed this earlier this evening, but, uh, there is a tremendous mountain of dirt on that, uh, on that property. And, um, I am concerned that, uh, all of the, uh, required building permits may or may not be, um, uh, issued as... At this point, and perhaps, Craig, you could... You could shed some light on that for us. Um, and if... If indeed they're not, then obviously the fill that's there, uh, far exceeds the requirements, uh, uh, that are, uh, that are outlined in the zoning ordinances. Um, I have a concern with regard to, uh, the July twentieth meeting. And with, um, regard to the, uh, failure to, uh... To reappoint, uh, Lisa Menrick to the, uh, to the library. Uh, just something that, uh, something that I wonder if we have, um, researched completely, um, the young lady that we did, uh, that we did, or... Or that the council did approve. Um, I think Lisa has tremendous experience. Uh, she's got the education, uh, and the, uh, and the knowledge of the, uh, community. And I would, uh, hope at some point that you'll have an opportunity to readdress that. And one other thing, uh, I want to bring up this evening is, um, I believe our Board of Review is short of, um, uh... Of representatives, uh, to meet the state requirements. And there is an applicant that has, uh, placed her, um, uh, application to the, uh, to the city. And I don't see that on the agenda for approval or not approval. Um, Mrs. Hopp, uh, has taken the required courses in order to, uh, in order to, um, uh...
So, Joe, I... I spoke with, uh...
I'm sorry?
I spoke with Craig and the mayor earlier this week. So that will be on our next agenda, um, or our next meeting's agenda. We have... We have several board candidates, so we'll all vote for it.
Okay, thanks, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And final passing, I've noticed, and, you know, I had the good fortune as a kid, I grew up on a farm and, uh, uh, I belonged to four H at the age of ten. Uh, starting, uh, in, uh, high school, I was in FFA. We all had very organized meetings and I have to compliment you guys tonight. You had a very, very well orchestrated meeting. I was a little upset, uh, to, uh, on Sep... Or on July twentieth with a couple of items. When I was on council, uh, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry. No, I'm gonna... I'm almost gonna say nineteen-twenty, but two thousand to two thousand-two. Um, we took the effort to, uh, or I took the effort to buy a copy of Robert's Rules of Water. And I think there have been instances when, uh, when the decorum on this, uh, on this council has been a little bit less than, uh, up to snuff. And I'm gonna make this available to, uh, to Craig. And Craig, I... Maybe yes or maybe no, that I think you are the, uh, you are the, uh, administrator of the, uh, of the council from the standpoint of, uh, being the parliamentarian. Uh, so I'll leave this with you, I would appreciate its return. But, uh, I think it might be a good idea if, um, you folks on the, uh, on the council were to review this to a certain extent and see if it, uh, if it helps the decorum that, uh, that's on the, um, uh, on the council. Many thanks, appreciate your... My opportunity to speak.
All right, uh, moving on to city reports, Craig?
No report? Thank you.
All right, Mike?
Couple things. What's the situation with that Klingel thing on, uh, Mary Street? He's playing us for fools.
He's received a notice, he has until Friday to get back to me.
Can we revoke his, um, um, short-term rental license?
We'll see what happens after Friday when he can say if he doesn't get back to me.
He's playing, you know, and another thing, um, he's gonna come up with some bullshit idea. Use my French. Insist on we do a perk test on his, uh, ideas. Cause there's no way that he's gonna remove that unless we... It'll probably end up in court. He's already told the neighbors, piss up a rope, he ain't gonna do it. So that's where we're at. Um, Van Wagner Road. You head west, take a right-hand turn, which you can turn on red. You cannot see down the street. Can you have the city crew clean that up? Um, they did it a couple, two, three years ago. There was an accident there the other day that... That was the excuse she pulled out and see because of the car... Of the, uh, traffic. I have... I have a question that, uh, Joe addressed, uh, you know, we have applicants for boards and commissions. Um, part of the City Council agenda is to, uh, the goals were to bring people forward to do it. We have several that I know of that are waiting for appointment. Uh, can you make sure that gets on the agenda next week or next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no.
All right. Bill?
No report.
Kate?
No report.
Jerry?
No report.
Well?
You're up.
I'm up. Okay, uh, for the Beautification Commission, we didn't meet two weeks ago. Um, so we haven't really met since the Fourth of July picnic. But I did want to say that we have to really be thankful for the volunteers because if we didn't have those volunteers, there's no way that we could put that picnic on. They are crucial to help us. Um, also I wanted to thank Mike DeWitt for donating to the bounce house, the kids always love that. Um, also, I don't know if it's possible, Craig, but we ran out of water. Um, we ran out of gallons and bottles. I couldn't make more lemonade because we were out of water. People were still coming and asking. So I... I know, you know, we're just gonna have to increase the amount that we've purchased. Um, other than that, that's my report.
Your honor? Um, Craig, could we send into the church in Ferryburg here to help us solve that?
The Gateway Church, yes.
Did we make sure we get him a nice plaque or, uh, letter of appreciation or something?
The mayor did send him a memo letter.
Okay. Thank you.
They're... They're the best, I mean, we couldn't do it without them, you know?
Yeah, they are.
All right. Anything else to...
That's it, end of report.
All right, um, uh, well, I want to say happy birthday to the Coast Guard today. Um, great Coast Guard Festival, lots of great activities, it was great seeing Dev and Bill at the, uh, dinner on, uh, Thursday. It's great to... That we continue to represent Ferrisburg. And with that, I feel it's necessary...
Oop, you're still going?
Can I go?
Sure.
All right. Jumping again. Uh, so I feel it's necessary to speak on the issue that affects not just this council, but the confidence our community places in local government. Recently, we've had a council member who has, uh, made the claim that this council has been spending like sailors on shore. Let me be absolutely clear, the statement is not just exaggerated, it is categorically false. This council has upheld its responsibility to the taxpayers by consistently maintaining a balanced budget, year after year. Our spending has been deliberate, transparent, and tied to essential city services, infrastructure improvements, safety, and long-term planning. We've not been reckless, we've been responsible. In addition, there's been a growing chatter largely fueled by social media and hearsay suggesting that this council is actively pursuing a heavily override. These rumors too are being exaggerated and in some cases deliberately twisted to provoke fear and suspicion among our residents. Let's clarify the facts, both the mayor and Councilman Sias have in various social media outlets expressed that the city may at some point need to explore the possibility of a heavily override as many communities across Michigan are doing due to increased costs and revenue limitations. But to be clear, no decision has been made and no proposal has been brought forward to this council. There's a big difference between exploring a possibility and campaigning on a false narrative. I fully support open debate and welcome differing viewpoints. That's the foundation of representative government. But fear-mongering misinformation and political posturing do a disservice to our community. They erode our public trust, distract from the work at hand, and mislead residents who depend on facts and not fiction. We owe it to our constituents to be truthful, to campaign with integrity, and to lead, whether from this table or on the campaign trail, with a commitment to honesty and responsibility. But I'd... I'd ask that we continue to stay focused on solutions, we rise above divisiveness, and let's continue to work, uh, to do the work the people of this city have elected us to do. With that...
Would you adjourn?
I'd like to say something, would you adjourn, please? What you just did is a disservice to this city, you're campaigning from the mayor's pulpit. And I will follow up on that, thank you.